Good evening. Welcome to the July 20th, 2023 Town of Burwick Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to ask everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The introduction of board members. To my left, I have Mr. Paul Ametucci, Mr. Jerry Grebill, Mr. Don Gennarelli, Phil Roy, Vice Chair, filling in as Chair this evening, and our two newest board members, Mr. Les Bodwell and Mr. Rick Rains. Thank you, gentlemen, for stepping up and fulfilling your civic duty in this very important role for our community. We're pleased to have you as part of our team. So we will start this evening with the public hearing, and the first public hearing is preliminary, excuse me, preliminary plan, major subdivision, Worcester Road, R 32, 17E, R 2 Zone, eventual equity. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. Yeah, Mike Sudak at our engineering here on behalf of Providential Equity Development. So this is the public hearing session, so I'm just going to do a brief overview, and we can take comment, and then, once we get back into old business, I can go through the comments from the last time. So we had a site walk beginning of last month, planning board meeting, middle of last month. Just a brief overview of what you're taking a look at. This is 77 acres out in the R 2 zone. It's a dual frontage lot with both Worcester Road and Pleasant Drive. Our proposal is to develop a 14-lot subdivision, single-family dwellings, clustered lots, exclusively off the Worcester Road frontage. All the lots are going to be individual drilled wells, individual onsite septic, serviced by a single road about 1,400 feet in length. Collector Street standards is what it's going to be designed to from the town. Besides that, done our wetland delineation, real pool study, high-intensity soil survey, test pits blanketing the site. We have adequate onsite utilities for each of the dwellings. Couple revisions that I'll go over once we get into old business, but besides that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Ms. Griffith, did you have something you wanted to say before the next item opened?
Um, well, let the public comments on this, and then after that. Thank you.
Understood.
I know. It was confusing, last second instructions.
All right, floor's open for anybody with public comment related to this project. Okay.
Hello. I am Noah Cobb, 90, Worcester Road. I'm also the Chair of the Select Board. I am this entire piece of property here. So my piece of property runs across the entire length of this development. So I'm one of three people that I would say are most directly affected by this development.
Could you show me again? I miss it. Where are you?
This is my property right here. So literally, the entire length of development.
Got it.
Like, that's the end of my property, and that's where the development is.
Okay, thanks, though.
Yep. I have no immediate objections to development, no environmental issues. Sure somebody was going to buy the piece of property next to me at some point, put something there. I was certainly hoping it'd be a bit smaller and not quite as covering of my entire property, but it is what it is. My biggest concerns, most were addressed in the site walk, that the stream would need to be preserved, and for the development's purposes, needs to be rerouted. As long as that rerouting doesn't affect the stream's flow through my property, then I have no problem with that. The wood lines, I asked if they were going to be basically sheared down to their line, and they said they were going to keep roughly 25 feet inward of that from the line, which is good, the more, the better. The only concern I have from a perspective of the town, as from the Select Board position, is that the road, which is a cul-de-sac, will not be maintained by the town. The town will not adopt it. It'll be private, and some allotment in the deeds for these new properties will have to be made for the road maintenance, whether that be a homeowners' association or a road association, because the town is not going to be maintaining these roads now or foreseeably in the future. The biggest concern that I have is privacy. Most of you were at the site walk. It's a big, open field, which is what I bought eight years ago, was a big, open field on all sides, basically. No neighbors around. That was a conscious choice on our part to maintain privacy. My wife has pretty severe anxiety around people and pets and all sorts of things, so being separated from that is an important part of her comfort and lifestyle. And the tree line is roughly about here, so our backyard is being divided into at least two properties. So our backyard is going to become at least two people's backyards as well, which is a great concern to her, because if there's people in their backyards, she's not going to be able to use her backyard. So my biggest concern is the privacy issue, and making sure that we have ours, and whoever gets these properties has theirs as well. So I strongly request that a fence be erected along that property line up to the wood line, a privacy fence, solid panel, just to secure the line and to maintain privacy for all parties involved. From my understanding, a six-foot fence can be put up without any engineering costs or anything like that. Beyond six feet would require engineering, and I'm not pushing for that. Six feet is perfectly fine to maintain, you know, privacy. It also will make good neighbors of us all, because we won't have to worry about where our lines are, where we're cutting to bushes, trees that may be put up. My garden is actually about five feet from the line currently, just because it's in the back of a field. There's nothing else there, but if it's somebody else's backyard, I have to make some accommodation for them. But I think a fence is the best way to handle that situation. I don't want to stop the development. I don't want to impede the use of the property. I just want to maintain our current privacy level that we are accustomed to and we purchased our house for. Yeah. Any questions?
So how, how, how many feet would that be a fence?
Roughly from, I mean, the first property, the homestead property, I have no issue with that. That's way up front. That's not going to affect our use of the property in any way, shape, or form. But the next three lots, basically encompass our, this is our front yard, this is basically where our house is, and this is our backyard. So I would say if you exclude the first house and have a fence from there to the tree line, you're talking about roughly 400 feet.
From my memory, that sounds about right.
Yeah. The way that my property is divided up, it's 10 acres, front to back, and the first five acres are open field, and the last five acres are all of our woodland. So where the properties go against the trees, that's probably not going to affect us very much at all. But the rest of the open field would affect us dramatically in terms of our usage of the property.
So would you take something other than a six-foot wooden fence, for instance? Vegetations, you?
It, that is not something that we're overly interested in, because a lot of vegetation needs to be maintained. And at that point, I don't know who's going to be maintaining it. Is it going to be the people that are living there? Is it going to be us? It's going to add leaves to the field, which luckily for now is not something that needs to be raped and blown on a regular basis. And the fence doesn't have to be wood. It can be plastic. It's just looking for solid, you know, solid paneling, so that we're not looking into their yard, they're not looking into our yard. There's already, there's probably already going to be some privacy issues, because the homes they're building are two stories, and they're going to be relatively aligned with ours, which is going to be new territory for us. But the usage of the yards is, is the more important concern.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment for this project?
My name is Cindy Pollack, and we live at 280 Pine Hill Road.
Could you repeat it one time just for the microphone, ma'am?
My name is Cindy Pollack, and we live at 280 Pine Hill Road. I am not sure exactly where we abut this new development, because this is the first we've heard about it. But our main concern is we got the letter for the stormwater application, and we don't want it affecting our property, obviously.
Where does your property abut, ma'am, if you could show us?
I don't know. This is the first we've heard about.
Okay. Are you familiar with the pre-existing home?
They're right here.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're right here. So we're going to check all this.
Okay.
So another main concern.
Any other public comment for this project? We'll go ahead and close the public comment for Worcester Road, and Ms. Griffith, you had some comments to make before we open the next public comment?
Yes. I want to let you guys know that, that there is going to be some people speaking about the land use ordinances, and in particular, the design criteria needs to be voted on tonight. So what I need to ask you guys is for any public comment that anybody makes in regards to land use ordinance changes, because you guys have to vote whether or not, if they don't go to Select Board tonight, then that's not going to happen. That you guys make notes of specifically what you want included, so then you can...
Excuse me. What does it mean it's not going to happen?
Well, it has to happen. This has to go to the Select Board. The Select Board has to vote so it can make it onto the ballot.
For next year?
For November.
Oh, for November, okay.
So we have, you know, bear in mind, things can always be like, we can revisit all of these design criteria type of things later on. We do need to overhaul some of the land use ordinances, which is something James and I have been discussing. We've been discussing with Lee Jay and Hannah, and with Phil, our attorney, because there are some things that have been proposed that actually just currently conflict with the land use ordinance, and we have to make some more adjustments. But I need you guys to please be very specific in what you hear from the public, that you want to include, so that when it comes time to make a motion, you can motion to, if you motion to send it to Select Board, that you do it with amendments as stated, but we have a specific list, okay? Because we, some of this has to be, like, our MS 4 stuff has to go through. So just make good notes and call things out individually, rather than basically accepting everything as one fell swoop, okay?
Thank you.
Was that clear as mud?
Absolutely.
You know I like to confuse you, get your brains all scrambled, too.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing on amendments to the land use ordinance, subdivision regulations, village overlay district design guidelines.
Did you, hello, I'm Jeremy Caston. I'm 310 Blackberry Hill Road. Did, did the board receive a package from James Bellisimo?
They receive everything from Terry. Terry, did you include that with the...
Very good. Excellent. Well, so I wish, because the way that was just explained is a little bit different than what James had led me to believe leading up to this, maybe I'll try to step back, set the table for this a little bit. I put together a document regarding specifically convenience stores and gas stations, based on conversations that we've had going back, you know, I don't know, four or five months now, and, and that led to a conversation about the overall design standards as we move potentially, design standards that apply to the downtown overlay district, to our, essentially, interstates, right, with 9, 4, through 236. I think about those as gateways into Burwick, and in need of some thought about what those designs should be, so that anything doesn't go. Mr. Roy and Mr. LaRue and James and I met. We had a conversation about going through a bunch of other towns' design standards for downtowns and such, and he produced several documents. I think a lot of it came through SMPDC, and we discussed going through those and pulling notions from other towns that seemed like they would be applicable to what we're trying to accomplish. I did that. I passed that document back to James, and when we talked about that yesterday, I did not know that I should have that document and read it, start to finish, beat by beat, and we can decide on it tonight. I don't have that, a copy of that, so if somebody wants to make that available, I'm happy to read it.
Jeremy, we, for starters, a public hearing, you're only allowed three to five minutes, so you wouldn't be able to read the whole thing, but you can't take...
They have to vote on it tonight.
They have to vote on it tonight, but for public comments, per Planning Board procedure, and we've had it posted up the last several months, on that the public comment is three to five minutes. They can give you an additional three to five, but they, we can't be here for 12 hours reading, but not, I know that's an exaggeration, obviously, but some of the things, I think you're probably hoping they would adopt this as a one-and-done, but they literally would not be able to, because you are probably not aware, but some of the things that you have included in this go directly against our land use ordinance or are conflicting with our land use ordinance.
That's why you're paid to do that, gentlemen. I'm just trying to be supportive of all of you.
But that's why we want to include whatever changes are in here that they may want, but I need them to be specific, so that we can pick out the pieces they definitely want, because we can't do it.
Have you gentlemen had a chance to read through that carefully and make thoughts and notes about that, as it relates to these changes?
So I would like to go on the record and just say, I know we had discussed this in the meeting that we had with Mr. Caston previously with our town manager, and I knew there was a sense of urgency, but in my opinion, and I'm offering an opinion, this is a very crude document that is not, in my opinion, polished and ready for primetime. And I think, and maybe it's a discussion for another time, but do we put forth a weak document that doesn't necessarily serve the best interest of our townspeople in the order to rush it to a vote?
Are you, are you referring to this design?
Yes, ma'am. As I'm going through it, it is, in my opinion, it is a bit crude, and I just think...
I'm sure there's a lot of change that can be made, and I'm sure that a lot of Jeremy's recommendations are definitely things that we should incorporate. I do want to remind you guys, the ball doesn't stop here. I want, I want all of you, the board and you, Jeremy, to be aware. What the recommendation the board needs to make is for it to go to Select Board. There will still be changes at the staff level. I mean, even if, even if you guys wanted to just run through it real quick, pick out the things you think you want, or if you want to somehow state you want to incorporate it, I mean, I can give it to him.
I can probably get through in five minutes. I really familiar with this guy.
I don't want to speak for everyone.
If they're willing to, if they're willing to let, if you're willing to let him read through it, I'll give him a copy of this, and...
That, that's fine, but I don't, in my humble opinion, our, our job is to provide quality products for the Select Board, so that it's easily digestible, they can make their recommendations. In my opinion, and maybe other people feel different.
I agree with you.
I do not think this document is ready for primetime, and rushing it to a vote, I think, is the wrong answer for our town.
And, and I understand that, and while I wholeheartedly agree, everything should be fully reviewed, just so the board is aware, if this does not get voted on tonight to go to the Select Board, then this will be left off the November ballot entirely, because we have reached the drop date.
And what is the, what is the negative repercussion of us doing that?
We wait another year, and what happens in the town?
You wait another year for, yeah.
More people standing up here, weeping about what's happening with that.
But then we have a quality product. If we're rushing this through for the sake of rushing it through, we're not, we're not doing our due diligence as a board.
I think the push for it being rushed through, with absolute full respect to all parties involved, has been the, I think it has been more of an attempt to appease the people that have been coming up and making the statements and the concerns, voice and the concerns and the complaints, to at least give them some sense of, at least we have something in place that we can tweak for next year, because we can always revisit this. But if you guys are comfortable with it not going through at all for this year, then that's fine. It's, I guess it's a matter for the board to determine what balance you want to strike with the voters.
So I, I think, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I just feel that I agree with you, that I want our product to be exactly what feedback from the community tells us they want, melded with what the realities of moving forward with, with the design document. So, and the truth is, this is the first time I've seen this. I haven't seen this. So I'm supposed to decide within the next half hour or 45 minutes whether this is good, bad, or a piece of trash. So I'm not willing to do that tonight, and I think that, you know, the rush to get it on the ballot, there, there's always another ballot. And, and I think, let's have some time with this. There's a lot of voices about this, and I think that every voice should be heard, and I think that every concern has to be addressed, and it's not just the design. It's other issues. There are environmental issues. There are road issues. There's a frontage issues. There's lighting issues. There are so many other issues involved in these types of things, and I'm just not prepared to say, hey, let's rubber stamp it tonight.
I agree with you. I think, I think our staff work is a, is a reflection of our efforts, and if we are producing less than what I perceive to be quality staff work, it's a reflection on us as a board and us as a town that is managing the affairs of the town for the townspeople. I would offer that if we aren't able to get this before a vote, we as the board still have the ability to condition projects as they come before the board, and we...
I've been saying that right along, but this is something that the public has pushed for, so we've tried to appease.
Absolutely, but if we...
That being said...
If we push through a less-than-stellar document, we're really kicking the can down the road, and we're, we're not doing our due diligence, and we're not doing quality staff work. That, that's my...
That being said, I want to clarify for you guys that regardless of how you feel about the individual pieces, and you guys can make a motion for each individual piece, if the MS 4 does not go to Select Board, so it can get on the budget, then we are in violation of our permit with the MS 4. That's the L U O stuff that Christie Rabasca was giving us, all the confusing stuff, he took all my input on applying it townwide, that kind of thing. I don't think anybody here is going to speak to any of that, but that we do have to be compliant with the state with our MS 4 permit. But that can be done different than this.
Can we do that through conditions until we have a quality product? Are we, is that within our power of...
That part you guys had already approved.
Okay.
That part is, that part was tendered two months ago.
Okay.
You guys approved that. She, I don't, let me refresh the board's memory that Christie had presented. We had had some discussion. There were some things that you guys kicked off of me, some questions I asked, some questions you asked. She made the changes, came back and presented those changes, and you guys accepted that part, but you never voted to put it to the Select Board. So we need to get that part done, because that's MS 4. We don't have, we don't have a say in that, and all that language, if you recall, was just what the state was saying we had to do, except for the parts that the board voted to make stricter, which she included. So that part is...
So can we break out, or...
You can break everything out in pieces.
Can we break out the MS 4 and send that to vote, so we are in compliance, because we've gotten our input from SMPDC, which has brought us up to compliance in those specific areas? But with regard to our design guide standards, I feel, I'm going to go on the record and say, we as a board have not done our homework, and I, and we need to produce quality work for the people of our town, so I'm going to be, I'm going to be a no vote on, on that.
Just as long as everybody is fully aware going into this vote, that by saying no, that this will not be on the November ballot, if you guys are, I just want to make sure we're 100% clear. This will not be on the November ballot if you guys do not vote.
Am I still within my moment to speak?
Yes.
Please, Jeremy.
Sorry.
Please.
Wait, you're still here?
We stopped your stopwatch.
I appreciate that. I just want to sort of reset the table and bring us up to speed, and I understand your position absolutely. I would never want anybody to put out anything that's sloppy, and I certainly understand receiving a package and not having an opportunity to read through it, I wouldn't put that through either. That being said, what brought us here was these, these multiple voices that you referred to, Mr. Ametucci, tend to have been, Capobere and myself, here for the last five months, speaking to these issues and concerns.
There were calls, too. You guys weren't alone. That's why I said multiple voices.
Understood, but, and, and to that, I want to remind us that there are concerns in the town about a lack of preparedness for what is not just coming, but arriving, and that, you know, I haven't seen, I watch every one of your meetings, I haven't seen anybody getting up here and saying, what we need to do is make sure we do nothing, and you guys meet, you know, on these Thursdays, and as far as we know, the public, we're not aware of other opportunities, other than the one time that we sat down and said, this is the plan, put this together, get it here by the 20th, and, and that's how we're moving forward with the town manager. I don't know where the disconnect was from Grabby's and...
Well, we did have a holiday in between two, which I think skewed, it skewed some timelines.
That said, that was a plan that had been put in motion from the moment that we said, okay, we're not going to change the land use ordinance. Let's look at design standards as a way of protecting our town. So it may be that putting out a product that then goes to the Select Board to be point-by-point decided on is not in your best interest, because it looks sloppy, and I understand that, but doing nothing is certainly more concerning than that, especially with less of an opportunity than, than these four minutes for the public to interact with you about these concerns. And nothing in there is, you know, none of it's made from whole cloth. It's all from neighboring towns' design standards. It's, it's taking design standards that we don't have for Roots 4, 9, and 236 and saying, we're applying our downtown design standards to those. Additionally, these would be some good considerations. They're pretty simple. None of it's super complicated, you know, setback, all this. A lot of these have very complicated tables. These are like, you should have pathways. Garbage should be screened with trees. Like, you can't have advertisements. You can't have, you can't have a gas station where you pull up and the pump starts talking to you and it's playing an ad. If you skim them, you'll see that. It's, we're not trying to push a bunch of crazy stuff through, which is saying, buildings shouldn't be made of garbage. They should be made, you know, signage shouldn't be the whole building. You shouldn't have a big flat wall. You should have a window in it. It's simple. And again, waiting from November to a whole nother six months for another vote means that something else will happen, that... means that something else will happen, that more people, and I watch all of your meetings. It's just one tearful moment after another at this point. It would be good rather than stasis to make a decision to move something forward, in my humble opinion. And I would appreciate, as a member of the public that's here a lot, that sense that things can be actionable, that we don't just go, eh, this isn't perfect and so we're going to not do anything. And again, this was the plan. We followed through with a plan. And then I'm arriving here to learn, oh, well, each of these should be individually decided upon in four minutes for a document that's borrowing from neighboring towns that, you know, that, that you guys saw what those were because they came from, from, from S M P D C and the town manager. So that, that's how this was built.
If you would like him to go over them.
Let me say something. At the last meeting, you were here. Lee J was on the screen. We went through some of this stuff.
Who was on the screen? I'm sorry. Lee J, okay.
We went through this and we gave him input. None of that's reflected in here. I sent a memo. None of it's in here. And they were, they said at that time, we would sit down and discuss this. We've had no time to discuss this. So I'm voting no because it's not being adhered to. And I'm not pushing something through that I don't believe in or hadn't had time to discuss with everybody.
I appreciate that information. As you, as you stated, I wasn't here and I'll be honest, I, I was out for about a part of 10 days sick and I was trying to, I've been trying to catch up, so I have not watched that meeting yet, so.
I haven't seen that package.
And I, I mean, in your defense
I remember that meeting and those notes. What can we do short of blowing up the world for another six months and saying, well, our hands are tied? Is there any other action that can be taken?
I think our hands, our hands aren't tied.
But with another timeline, this is what happened last time. It's really like, well, our hands are tied by a timeline. Here we are again. I've done all this legwork, poured myself into this and we're being told, well, that you got to decide tonight. It's like, why is this always set up for the public not to actually
Correct.
Participate in democracy.
That's my frustration and I share that frustration with you. And I would, and I would ask our, our chairperson, if you, if you don't mind, Mr. Cobb. I mean, if we produce a less than, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to crap on anybody's staff work, but if we, if we produce staff work that is less than stellar for you guys, we're creating more work for you, are we not?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not dramatically more work. It's not something that we're going to, we're going to look down on you guys for or, you know. The, when we get land use ordinance changes before they go to the actual ballot, they, we go through them, they get edited, they get edited again. And, you know, it's, it's not, it's not finality. What you produce is basically a recommendation to us. Then we tear it apart again and then we, you know, pass it on to the voters. The voters say whether they want it or not. The
And with all due respect, I should have clarified that too, Noah. And I appreciate you
The, I mean, the reality is that if, if you passed us, you know, recommendations that just said, you know, more trees, we would, we would clear that up so that it was actually what it was, what the intention was supposed to be. You know, even though that's not what you guys recommended to us. I'd also add, on top of the editing that we would do to whatever you produced, I mean, there's, I, I think there's, you know, options to have a January vote in extraordinary circumstances if we really wanted to. The only concern with the January vote is next to nobody shows up for them. And the people that show up for them tend to vote no on everything. So that, that does occur, but it is a possibility that if you really want to push it and you're able to get the town clerk on board, that's something that is, you know,
Well, I would, I would offer, I would offer this, Noah. What if, and, and Mr. Graybill just came up with a brilliant idea. Let's, let's hold ourselves to task. The two boards, let's sit down and let's conference this out between the two boards. That way we're streamlining the process and we're, we're producing a quality product to go before the voters instead of us putting forth. I would be less than excited to put my name to this document and saying that we should vote for this and send it forward because we have not done our homework, in my opinion.
If I may, also the fact that there were notes made with our town
And they're not in here.
That are not reflected in this document that I didn't see is deeply concerning and should absolutely be fixed before it goes to a vote in November. Is there a way, I think this idea is amazing.
Could we get a date on a calendar to commit to us meeting with the select board to hash this out that would allow us to make some type of a quality product to put before the voters before the vote?
Can I ask you a question?
We can
Please.
I'd just like to ask, what is the imperative rush to get this on the November ballot versus the springtime ballot?
I can speak to that. Nice to meet you, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, too.
James has recommended we meet at some point. I think everybody is aware that we live at a time where we, in Berwick, Maine, have enormous pressure, which is why you always have people up here in tears talking about development. And that pressure is changing things fast. And I've spoken before the board multiple times about this. And I think that I am somewhat at an advantage because I am from away and I've lived in multiple places where I've seen quasi rural areas and lovely, unique country farms become Walmarts very quickly. And that pressure is not lessening, it's, it's gaining and it is gaining quickly. And knowing that we have nothing in place means that we haven't set ourselves up for a future. And that future is now and it's happening. So we, we hope by being citizens here in front of the planning board for, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting, speaking to these issues, that, you know, it's been a year that we've been talking about, how can we make these improvements? How can we think about these things in a way that then puts it back in the voters' hands? Well, this is it. I agree that this is not how it should have gone down. Certainly it deserves better monitoring. But if there's a way, I, I think your, your solution is fantastic and is exactly how democracy is supposed to work. You are able to put both boards together.
Can we get on the calendar and make that happen?
We'll have to work with Patty for that.
Okay.
And if I may, a more direct answer to your question is the previous administrative assistant for planning and code made it very publicly aware that there was a fuel station that is being proposed. We have not received an application. A fuel station. Being proposed that we have not received an application for. And ever since that moment, there has been this momentous snowball to create design standards and regulations, which understandably we do need to have, but that is the precipice for that whole situation.
I'm so sorry.
Jeff, can you step up to the mic if you're going to speak, sir?
That's what has, has brought this about and that's
That was my, that was my suspicion.
That's exactly it.
And so my, my question about that is because I'm with you 100%. Everything you said, I agree 100%. I, I love the idea of having these standards in place. I don't love the idea of rushing these standards through. And that's why I was asking, what is the time sensitive nature of why do we have to do this tonight? Versus reviewing that. And so let me just finish my point because I believe that if that application goes in before the vote goes in, these will not apply to that project anyways.
Yes.
So that's why I was like, what is the pressure to do this tonight versus, you know, because one of the, I'll tell you, one of my goals of being on the planning board is to help with these issues of making amendments to the land use ordinance and simplifying, you know, Irish and I were talking about some of the areas that we think that there should be a simplified process. So I, I'm, I'm with you 100%. I, I agree that these should be in. I'm also concerned, I have not even, I mean, I received these at 6:25. So I, I'm reluctant to rush them through as well. And again, if there's, if there's a fuel station, you know, being proposed, if that application goes in before the vote, these aren't going to apply to it anyways. So that reiterates my question of, should we be rushing these through haphazardly?
So full disclosure.
Versus getting them on the next vote.
I have full disclosure, one statement, and then I have one suggestion and then I'm going to shut up and let you all duke it out because we've been here for over half an hour and we haven't made it past public hearing. So full disclosure, the gentleman who purchased the parcel in question has come in and I would anticipate because he has been dealing with his application. By the way, surprise Hannah. Because he's been dealing with his state fuel application. And I already have been reading through four different chapters from all of my contacts at the state. We will probably receive that application before the November vote anyway. So that kind of takes some of the steam off it. But, but the other thing, here's my suggestion, and I don't know Hannah, procedure wise, Phil, how the board will feel about this. Why don't we, is there a way that we could potentially say, okay, you know what? The board, the board advises or the board motions to put these forward as a tentative initial criteria with the intent to meet with the select board to do a joint?
No, I'm not comfortable with that at all. I would, I would just like to go on the record and say, you know, I, I feel like the gentlemen at this table and, and past board members, we, we do a lot of homework. We're, we're unpaid volunteers, but we do our homework. And I think we put appropriate conditions to maintain our small town charm. And I think we do that in, in the best interest of the public. And I hope that is transparent to the public. My, my gut feeling and my heart as somebody who loves this town and is going to live and die in this town, this is not a quality document that reflects my contributions to, to this process. And I just don't feel comfortable putting it forth. I would ask that the townspeople, if that is a source of frustration, please understand that we as a board still have the ability to condition projects in such a manner that they will meet a unique design criteria that fits with our town plan with our eye on the prize of putting forth a quality document that holds future applicants' feet to the fire with regard to what we think right looks like. And I really think that's the right way ahead for our town. And if we, if we miss the mark on this because we rush it through, then shame on us. So I am, I am going to be a no vote. And I would be willing to take a roll call vote on this at this time if it's appropriate. Yes, ma'am.
Pat, Pat Obair, Six Country, Maine, Mark. And I guess, are you voting strictly on the design standards? Because I have some suggestions for changes to the actual definitions and things like that. I don't want you to vote no on the whole gas station thing. If you're voting strictly on those design standards, that's one thing. But I have things that I would like to bring forth that would probably be fairly easy changes. And perhaps the change, perhaps these things can go forward and the design standards can wait.
Would love to see copies of that too.
I have not. I'm sorry to say they're in my, I just Kukunemi work. Can I explain it? I can get it all recorded here. I am like you, I don't have a lot of time to be doing this.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd just like
Yes, ma'am.
To advise, whatever vote that the board decides to make, don't make any votes until we get to the actual agenda item for this. Wait and close the public hearing, then do all the votes later.
Thank you.
We've been in the public hearing forever.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I am addressing is, and I don't know if it's changed because I honestly did not go online to see if this has changed, this thing that was proposed by Lee Day originally.
It was slightly changed, but not to what we discussed. And then there were supposed to be discussions on that.
Okay, so I'd like to just do some addressing of, of that actual sheet. So do you all have that sheet?
Yes.
Because I'd like to start at the top of it. I think they're still looking. I'm sure you can share. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So the first thing is the new definition that is not in there because this was, remember, there was an omission. That's what all this was about, six months ago. Okay, so you came up with a, someone came up with a definition. First of all, I always get too nervous and I never said thank you for all the work everybody did. So thank you for all the work and that you've already done. So the automotive convenience store definition. I think the definition is fine, but when I got thinking about it, I don't, it does not take into account a standalone gas station like in North Berwick. So I think it's very important to change the definition to say something, I mean, you guys do it, but automotive convenience store slash gas station or standalone gas station or whatever you want to do. But, but you don't want to have an omission for a standalone gas station because if you, if you come in, I pretended I was coming in with a standalone gas station going through these, they don't apply, not all of them. So I think it's very important to make sure we add that type of gas station also, yes.
How would you feel if that was, if standalone fuel station was, if, was separate? A separate second definition? Because the convenience station has the retail portion. Would you be okay if they added a second definition that just said standalone fuel stations and then had everything that applies to the gas stations apply to those fuel stations?
Possibly, but we can't omit standalone gas stations.
No, but I'm just asking, instead of together, two separate, something along those lines.
You guys have to figure that out. But all I know is that we haven't covered, the big thing with this is covering gas in our town.
Yeah.
And we aren't doing it by this definition. So that's, that's one thing. So the, the second thing I'm feeling is when you go down to the little table for commercial and you have automotive convenience store, then you also need to have, if you're going to do a separate one, you also need to have that separate one. But to me, they all follow the same place of where they should be. And I included in your, in your packet that I gave you, a map of nine, Route nine, 236, and four. And so what I would like to say to that is that to me, if you, if you take Route four, all of Route four is in R C I. An R C I on the table has a condition with a star. Okay, so to me, that's, that's appropriate. So what I'm asking you to do is to think critically of each one of these roads. If you think of Route 236, you have an R C I section by the dump and, or the transfer station and that kind of thing. And so again, that would fall under the conditional star. And then the rest of it, I believe, is R two. You think of Route 236 and the way the land is very much open land, farmland, that kind of thing. And Route 236 is very high and below where everything flows is the Salmon Falls River. Please do not allow a gas station on Route 236. That's my opinion of that. Now, if you go to Route nine, it's a little more complicated. But Route nine, R one, we have on the chart allows conditional with a star. That would include up to the intersection where Freddie Farwell's gas station used to be. Okay? So to me, that can be a condition and includes everything downtown. That would be conditioned with a star like it says on the map. R two, I believe, should not be allowed. If you look on your map, you can see where R two is there. If you look on your map, you can see where R2 is there. And then R3, I think R2 includes, whatever, let me keep going. And then R3, I think might be a little questionable. It's the area, I think it should not be. It's the area between the Cranberry Meadow Swamp, so it would include the swamp area, and the Beaver Dam swamp area. To me, it's again, water. No gas should be in those swampy water areas. And think of, think of the area, the Beaver Dam area, the campground, the Tackman Tack Playhouse. A gas station, you know, we got to think for the future, how we want our town to look. Do we want a gas station there? I don't think so. You guys can decide. There is a little spot between the Nolton School and the Guinea Road. I mean, that has one of the marijuana places, I think it has storage areas, stuff like that. If you desperately want a gas station on Route Nine, to me, that would be the place to do it. But I, my husband told me that that would be spot zoning and that that doesn't stand up in court. So to me, it looks to me like R1 should be C with a star, R2 should be an X, R3 should be an X. And then I wasn't sure what some of these were. I saw there was another C with a star under LR, which I think is limited residential, and that's in shoreline zoning. Why would you put gas in shoreline zoning? To me, that should be an X also. So those are things easily fixed if you agree, whatever you need to talk about.
Ms. Bowmer, I don't want to cut you short. We do have timelines and we have a full agenda, but I do want to say, based on the fact that you're providing us with things that we should already have and that should have already been considered, which is why we need to take our time and do our due diligence with this document. Furthermore, we have met on this, the board has made recommendations to this document that don't appear in this document, and that is problematic. I know we record our meetings, so maybe this is not the most recent draft, but we have made changes to this document that don't appear, and that, to me, is problematic. So I know all of our meetings are recorded. I think we're, we just collectively are not producing quality staff work, which is why I am reluctant to put this forward to the voters. I just don't think it's ready for.
I have one more thing that I just, is it okay? Under J, you just have convenience stores. It should also, again, say automotive convenience store. It should not just say convenience store.
And that would be cleaned up and some of the housekeeping, it'll be, it will be.
Okay, well, I thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time and for your work.
Thanks. And I also want you to know that it is very frustrating as a resident to think you're doing what you're supposed to do and doing what you're told you're supposed to do, and you don't get the results that you are told you will get. We were hoping to get in the time slot before. This was not a guarantee, but all of this was supposed to be done in this six months, and it's not. So someone, somewhere, is not performing or doing what needs to be done, and part of it can be us as volunteer, you know, just citizens. But then we need to be told what it is that we need to do and do it. And I also wanted to say that I think it's great, we talked about this before, that having these things in place, even if they don't pass, like Lester's saying, even if they don't pass what's rushed, you can say, this is what we're going to be doing, this is what we would like to hold you to, this is what. You can't hold them maybe to everything, but you can certainly show them what's in the works and that this is what you're striving for.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate your time.
May I just have 30 more seconds because I just got cut off right at finish my thought. I wanted to respond on the record for what we had said.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I know it's a full agenda. I just want to address what seems to be something that's been repeated several times, man, which is this sense that there's no urgency because perhaps this one gas station is going to happen before a November vote. I want to be very clear, this gas station is not the issue. There's not, we're not in River City with a pool table. We're talking about an incredible amount of pressure in a rural town that has been the same, essentially, in many ways, since before the Revolutionary War. And now it's going to be the suburbs. And once there are Jiffy Lubes and Dunkin' Donuts, you can't reverse that. And to be very clear, I do not think anybody in this room or in this town believes that this one gas station, if it happens before the vote, well, then we, what's the rush? The rush is it's changing. And if we keep not doing things because we're waiting to react, and every time the citizens show up and ask for changes and ask for reactions, nothing happens, at some point, people will get very, very frustrated with this system.
And we need to hold ourselves accountable to a timeline. And I will concede to you that we have failed to do that, and we will pledge to do better. But I, and I think those members of the board that agree with me, we can't put forth a less than quality product. It just, what are we doing here? If we're just going to put out paper for the sake of putting out paper?
Well, it's not paper, it's actually ideas that have backed up by all the towns around us that have done a very, very good job of what we have failed to do. Is there any way you can have an executive session to go through any of this, to make these decisions?
Well, that's what we're asking for with the select board, and I think that's going to be our best chance.
I would hope that for all the people that we interact with outside of this room who say, I am very, very worried.
Can we embrace technology and look at a calendar? We have the chair of the.
Well, the problem is, we have the chair, but we do not have their administrative assistant who holds on to their schedules. So what we'll have to do is we will have to embrace technology and do it via email once I can pick some dates with Patty. If I could set it myself, absolutely, I would pull up a calendar.
And I'm not intending to hinder the process. I hope I'm not coming across as that. If anything, I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence for the town.
And I'm not trying to come off as pushy because I completely understand the board. And again, I apologize for not watching that last meeting in preparation of this one. I just want to make sure that whatever we can get on the ballot that benefits the voters gets on there. Whatever you guys can't, we can't. But I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know that there was another document.
It's worth putting in the sweat equity, I'm willing to do it.
Well, I wasn't aware that there was another document that was supposed to have been prepared again because I did not watch that, and I don't know what the deal is with that, and I will follow up for the board and for everybody to be aware of what's going on there. That having been said, I just, I assumed that this was the most recent updated copy, that you guys were aware that this was all happening, and I wanted to make sure that if you guys chose, you know, all but lines four out of page one of what Jeremy had proposed, that you guys knew that specifically and could tell me that, you know what I mean? I wasn't trying to incite a riot, and Jeremy, I know this isn't the only, that one fuel station isn't the only thing.
I've been here two years talking about this.
And I get that, and I hope I didn't give you guys that impression. And I do want you and Pat to know that I'm reading four chapters of the most boring, dry reading I've ever read, compliments of Maine D E P and their fuel, tank, storage, evaluation stuff, but I'm doing it for you guys, so we're going to get through it.
Mr. Raines, did you have a comment?
I did, I just wanted to say that I empathize with how you feel. I sat in those chairs those past six months, and I've heard you and Pat get up and talk very passionately about this, and I'm in agreement with you. And I think this document is a fantastic starting place, and I think the first 10 points are kind of, we'd like this, and then the next 10 pages are only recommendations, which can be agreed to or not. I joined the board most recently because I want to be, like Phil says, I want to be the change that I'd like to see. And one of the things that I want to do is prevent this from happening again for another topic, for another land use ordinance, for another area of town, for another set of buildings or residences or anything like that. And communication is key. We all fall through the cracks at times, and we're human beings, and that's not an excuse, but it does happen. And I just wanted to let you know that you've done a fantastic job coming here and speaking your minds, putting together this paperwork, and I, for one, am going to fight very hard to try to expedite this process to get something, to get some kind of change going before we're here nine months from now talking about it again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of you and all of your time and all of your serious consideration to all of this.
And thank you for suggesting the meeting.
Yes. I think that's a fabulous solution, and I think it would mean a lot to the voters and the citizens to see something in November that represents the planning board thinking about planning so that we are getting ahead of these pressures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator.
I think, I think listening to all your concerns and our concerns is sometimes we have to have the courage to do the right thing and not always what is expected. That's something that we all have to keep in mind.
Any other comments related to the land use ordinance? Moving on, go ahead and open up public comment. Anybody for public comment?
Well, I'll comment, I just put you on the schedule to make sure on Monday that I get some dates for you.
The next agenda item is approval of minutes. There were a couple of errors with regard to the minutes on page three, the bottom paragraph. It says, Ms. Bowne stated that she does expect anything regarding, I think that was supposed to be, does not.
What page?
Page, third page, bottom paragraph. Ms. Bowne stated.
We excluded the word not.
Correct, I believe so.
Thank you.
And that was a good catch. Mr. Raines, thank you for bringing that to my attention. And then I think where it says Mr. Sari. Is that supposed to be?
Were we on the same page?
Yes, ma'am, just below, we start the paragraph about Mr. Souda. Was there a Mr. Sari? Or is that a misspelling?
Different project.
We have two different.
Yeah, Mr. Sari is the Woodland Pond.
Okay.
So we'll change that. Thank you.
And it's again on the top of the next page.
Mr. Sari again.
Lots of S names everywhere.
If we can make those amendments and corrections, I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes as amended.
I second that motion.
Any further questions? Roll call vote?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Phil and Dawn.
Second.
Mr. Raines, he's a yes. And this chair was a yes. I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Adamus vote. Okay, old business. Final plan, major subdivision, Woodland Pond, Alley Pond, R7 Lot Two, and Johnny Lane, R8, 6-6, Altis Engineering.
Mr. Chair, I want to go on record as saying that I have a conflict of interest with this project, as I have interest in this, so I'm going to recuse myself from all discussion and all voting and actually remove myself from the table so that you guys can proceed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for not making me.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Eric Sari, here on behalf of the applicant. Quick rundown of what's happened in the intervening time here since we were last before you. We had a little site walk with IFNW. None of you guys were there, were you? Okay, well, we had fun, we tramped through the wetlands. It was pretty wet back there. We had a good time, and a lot was done, we had a lot of discussions, and then this past week, we got a letter from IFNW that sort of contradicted what we took away from them, well, site walk, to be honest with you. It also did not include some of the recommendations they had made this past winter, which was very curious. To boil it all down, what they recommend to you, now, these are recommendations only, they really have no authority over the project, is for us to remove Lot 11, which is this one here, and lots three and four, and put those into open space. Obviously, the applicant is very opposed to that. In our opinion, the sensitive wetlands that are good turtle habitat, these right here, are for the most part in open space along with the rest of the project. This is the good stuff back in here. We're already preserving that. So it's up to the board to decide if you want to, you know, put us in a situation where we can take these lots away and put them someplace else on the property or go ahead with the project as posed. There's a Plan B. Now, Plan B goes back in history a little ways. This is the 2000 plan for Alley Pond Road itself. At that time, just to give you bearings here, this is the project site here. So Alley Pond Road is where it continues on this way. They had a future right-of-way wrapping around the back of this lot here, which was curious. And then it showed up again, not called out as future, it actually calls it out as a right-of-way, on a 2002 plan which documented the easement down to the fire department. So we looked at that as a Plan B only, and this is not our preference, to resurrect that hammerhead and move those lots up into here. Same number of lots, the area of open space actually increases a little bit, the amount of pavement goes up, so we're going to have some more stormwater that we're going to have to manage, but I don't think that's the end of the world, that's something we can do. I don't love it for the reason that it sort of fragmented the open space. Right now, you've got the Alley Pond subdivision common land in the back here, and we're putting lots in between it and the open space here on this parcel. So it kind of illuminates that corridor for wildlife to cut through. We're amenable to whatever the board wants to do, we can do either one, but obviously our preference is to go with what we have before you and what we've been discussing for six months now.
Did IFNW offer an opinion on the proposed change?
No, no, this was something I came up with this week, just thinking, okay, there's a way out, there's got to be a Plan B.
I've got a question, based on what you have there, those two lots that you moved up, are they going to have the appropriate frontage?
It's a cluster, so there's no frontage requirement. There's no lot size requirement?
Yes, I just.
Nobody's seen this yet, so I'm dropping it on you.
I'm really like, may I?
Yeah, of course.
Please.
So, and one question I do have for you, Eric. Get the princess chair out of the way. On site, you and I have discussed that one of the lot, moving the building envelope a little bit, a little bit. Is that something that?
You're going to have to talk into the microphone, Ms. Griffin.
I believe.
You're going to have to be on the microphone.
Thank you for the scolding because I needed that. I should know better. So I believe it was Lot, was it Lot Two? Or was it? That we were going to pull the billing envelope back, it was back in the corner of, is your applicant still amenable to doing that?
That's easy. Absolutely, we have no problem with that whatsoever.
So then this is Plan A, and Plan B is?
This is Plan A, which you guys, well, let me talk to that real quick. What Irish is talking about is putting another building restriction similar to the one that we put in the lot back in Lot Four, which has no, got no fair notice, right, it's right about here.
On those two lots?
Back of these three, actually, the back of these three would force all the development up to the front of the lot towards the road where it belongs.
Can you show me the lots again that they're suggesting you eliminate?
This guy, this guy, which we're already committed to not cutting half of anyway, and this one here.
So that last one, they're suggesting it because you cross a fair amount of wetlands here?
The crossing is already there, and it is permitted. It was, and after the fact permit, but we walked the site with the Army Corps, we have our D E P permit and Army Corps permit, we're committed to upsizing the crossing because it's not big enough for wildlife. Army Corps is very adamant about that one and the one that crosses the mainstream here, so they will just get upsized to big pipes that are half buried in the ground so turtles can go underneath it. So that's already on the plan and part of the project. Plan B.
Would that require another chop from IFNW, though?
I don't know. I mean, again, they don't have jurisdiction over this, they're making suggestions only. It's for the planning board to decide here what's best. I think they were more concerned about this wetland path coming down here because there is a little bit of a stream in there.
Right, and that's why.
That's what you took away, right? This sort of stream complex is what they were looking at?
Yes.
That's why I asked you, you know, to show me again where the lots were, where they were suggesting taking the lots out.
Yeah, so it's, in this Plan B, it would be this area, this area, and this lot in here would be open space, the lots in here, but open space would increase slightly. slightly.
So you put the lots on top?
Yes.
With the D building?
Yeah, with, yeah, with the new hammerhead there. It's doable.
So what is, what is eliminating those lots accomplish?
I think he wants, yeah, he wants as much development away from this thing, which goes down through this one here, that would some, some better turtle habitat.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So, again, the IFNW report is only suggestions, but it's up to the board to condition this as it may see fit. Having looked at those, having spoken with Mr. Sari at the site walk that we did, my personal opinion, although, yes, I, I think you guys have established by now I love me some open space, I think, given that the crossing's already there, and given that the, if the developer is willing to put that restriction on, I, it almost appears to me that, that the land would be better served by just having those, that back part restricted. I'm not real sure about that, that one furthest lot closest to the fire lane.
This guy?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the one where the whole back half is already restricted?
So when we-
And that was IFNW's request to begin with.
That's right, that's right.
So do you believe, and obviously I can't read that from that far away, do you believe that you can put a no-cut type of buffer on the backs of those two lots that are next to the one that already has one?
Yeah.
And still create a large enough building envelope that essentially accomplishes the protections they want without-
Without making your area unbuildable for that lot?
Let's have a look. So, real quick. Okay, so the leach fields are up front already, which is good, and I put the wells way at the back, I can move the wells up and still maintain plenty of distance from those leach fields. The well radius itself can overlap the no-cut zone, so that's not a problem at all, so it's definitely feasible.
I'd also like to echo that I would agree that at the end of the site walk with IFNW, I did not expect this letter-
Yeah.
-to say what it did either.
So why did, why did they put that verbiage in there?
I don't know.
Why are we getting blindsided?
I don't know.
Because, so this is where I'm torn, is if we make concessions for one development, and the next one comes in, and we have kind of thumbed our finger in the eye of IFNW's recommendation, I think it puts us in a very precarious position, and it's, it creates a standard.
Right.
I'm just reluctant to go down that road, but I don't, how do other board members feel about that?
I'm kind of feeling that the, the Plan B is the way to go here. I think it, but does that necessitate another IFNW?
Well, it's, it's all in upwind, maybe it's Plan B.
Well, it doesn't change the areas, I mean, the areas where investigated, I'm looking.
Good point.
There isn't any wetland up in that area really anyway.
This wetland we walked through was not turtle habitat, for sure.
Right.
This is just a little chunk of isolated wetland in the back forest, and so this was the critical stuff, coming through here, down here, which crosses over to the pond.
Yeah, it looks like a no-brainer to me to do Plan B.
It was simple, I just looked at-
And it keeps us in the good graces of IFNW.
That's right, and also, I think, you know, for, for the homeowners in that area, they were very concerned with the environmental impact to wildlife, and I think this resolves that.
And you guys are amenable to doing that?
Oh, absolutely. I wouldn't have shown it to you if we weren't ready to do it.
And I think that, I think that the, what I'm seeing there is that, you know, the, the path of the wildlife that we're trying to preserve, you know, if that was somebody's lot where that crossing is, well, then it's, it's less, you know, less protected than if it's open space, per se, you know, if it's open space, nobody's running a lawnmower or encroaching on the, on the habitat.
Don't pay their grass with things in the wetland, which is, you know.
And I think, as a developer, I think I like this, this plan better anyways.
Well, he's got to pay for a little more road, of course, but-
I got one question. Go, please. I got one question on this. You said the other plan, when you had that up, you had to upgrade the drainage.
Yes.
This will still happen on this?
That would still happen. What I did was, this was in response to Mr. Rains' comments, received the email. There's some erosion occurring in here. I think what's happening is all this runoff is now channelized in the roadside swell that wasn't there before, so I was looking to take that across the street away from Karen Millane's property and put it through the system here. That actually, I ran the numbers already, it actually helps the drainage situation a little bit, so it's totally doable, I mean, the design is done already, so it's ready to rock.
Iris, just, do we have to do another notice for abutters on that other end if they moved the lots up there, or we, has that ship already sailed, is that, are we good?
Hannah, that's a good procedural question for you.
As far as like, public hearing, et cetera, and-
So the no abut, I don't know how to phrase this.
There's no new abutters that are being touched by this, they have all this, all the abutters that are touching the property were already noticed, and it's the same number of lots.
Okay.
Okay. So we're, you're moving the house lots up there, which would change their visual-
Yes.
Yeah, I just, does that create a conflict for us, and do we have to go back to public comment, or no?
I don't. That's a good Hannah question.
Technically, I would say probably no, but I don't know if, just based on all of the conversation, the board would still want to.
I, I would say that, that projects change all the time through the process-
Yeah.
-and it doesn't get renoticed.
Yeah, I don't think you technically have to, but you, there's nothing saying you can't.
I would be inclined to not go through that process again, just because if, if abutters are concerned about the project, then I think they should be following along.
They should, correct.
I do have two things. One, first of all, for those of us that were at the site walk, Derek York's suggestions on-site and what came in that letter from the other gentleman, we were all blindsided by this. Okay? And I, and I asked a lot of questions, and I tromped through the woods because that's what I like to do.
Can I see Plan A again, please?
But that being said, I don't want to not have this read into record as it was requested to be, so I was going to read that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
So, we received an email from Ms. Millane, Karen Millane, that says, hello, I am unable to attend this evening's meeting, however, I request my concerns be on record for this meeting. I am requesting the public hearing be reopened. With the new information resulting from the environmental review and recommendations, I would like to know what the response will be from the developer in the town with the available, with the ability of discussing it in a public hearing. I would also like to discuss what the resolution will be from the developer to correct the issue with the water runoff as it is dumping into my front yard, causing erosion and other issues. I'd like to see this on paper, not just verbal approach. Thank you, Karen. Although I do want to remind you that you guys had all previously agreed that unless we had new information, which this is not new information, just new recommendations, so.
Would you be amenable to going with Plan B and putting in writing a formal stormwater management plan to, to address the concerns of the abutter?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a change to the stormwater plan we already have and already have submitted, it just makes this slightly better. So it's, it's already there, and the calcs are done, I just need to revise the narrative.
You're agreeable to do or not?
Yeah, totally, yeah, that's-
So both of her issues are being addressed. Thank you, Board.
Can I ask two questions? One, the, on your Plan B, where that new road would come out, is that where we parked and kind of met for the site walk?
Exactly. Yeah, so it's taking one of the legs of the existing hammerhead and turning it into proper road.
Okay. Second question, under this plan, does that chunk, the, the open space there-
Yep.
-does that connect to any open space in the original subdivision?
There's a little connection that I left right here, that's all I could do, but there is a path, so it is technically contiguous.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, of course, it's contiguous with the piece across the road-
Right.
-which is, goes into just tons of woods.
So do we need to motion that to get it on the record? Is that?
That you're accepting this is their preliminary plan?
With conditions?
Yes.
With those conditions?
Yes.
All right. I will make a motion that we find this complete with the condition that you go with your Plan B, move the lots up, and that we, you submit a formal, written water management plan to address the concerns of, of the abutter.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Okay, do you guys want us to come back and do final again?
I think it-
This was just the preliminary plan at this point still.
Correct.
So.
Well, this is, this is final.
Was it?
This is final.
Never mind.
Iris, we're uncomfortable, if you're comfortable, if they submit their updated plans with the letter to the abutter regarding what they're, they intend to do with the drainage, does that answer the mail for, for you and for the town?
Yes, and the only question I would have to that is, would the Board prefer that Mr. Sari direct a letter directly to Ms. Millane, or would you be more comfortable if he submitted it to us and we just sent it out to Ms. Millane?
I think it'd be appropriate to be to the town and CC her.
Okay, I prefer that as well, but I want to make sure that we're, if you're asking-
It's addressing our concerns, and it's giving her visibility on the issue which she has requested, and I think that administratively is the neat and tidy way to put a bow on it.
I agree, I just want to make sure if I'm following what you want.
Okay, what I'll do is a cover letter outlining all the changes, and then you guys will be copied on it.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you for making our job a little easier.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Not to delay the process, but if this is a new plan now, we haven't seen anything related to the road for the new lots.
Okay. Well, we have the lot sizes there, I mean, the road itself, I mean, that's the flat part of the site, so that's about as easy as it gets. I mean, I, I don't think it needs to go through engineering review, I think we're just going to submit the, the calcs that go with it. The plans would be amended to reflect that, obviously, I'd have a new plan, a profile, a new grading plan, and maybe a few new test bits for septics, but that's it, I mean, it's, it sounds like a lot, but it's actually pretty minor in my world, anyway.
Does that answer the mail for SMPTC? Does that pass muster? It's on, or do you need time to digest that and get back to us?
I, I would be cautious to approve a final plan when you just saw it for the first time today.
Okay.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but I, I would say next meeting we can approve a final plan if we can review, I don't want to send it out to an engineer, but I would like to see the plans before the Board approves them.
Okay, I don't think that's unreasonable.
So, in that case, Eric will get us a copy digital, and we will send that over to SMPTC for SMPTC to review and give a thumbs up, thumbs down, or what have you, and the next meeting, the Board can vote. Does, do we need to do the entire public hearing and such, or can we?
Can we make a motion, just to streamline the process for the applicant, is it appropriate if SMPTC approves of the changes made, and they have the appropriate documentation, if it passes with SMPTC, can we vote on it tonight?
I think that would be a great condition, actually.
And that way, we're not holding up the applicant.
So if I'm not mistaken, what you guys are looking to do is to make a motion to approve the Plan B as the final plan pending SMPTC's approval, and with the condition, the additional condition that Mr. Sari puts in writing the stormwater for Ms. Millane's property.
I think that is less administratively arduous for all parties involved and moves it along if it is procedurally correct to do it that way.
We've been in front of you guys a while on this, I think it's time to hoof it on it.
Does that answer the mail for you? Is that reasonable?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion that we do what you said.
I've been waiting for Amanda to say that all my, oh, sorry. Okay, so Phil has made a motion to amend the motion to include the SMPTC, so we have a-
So with SMPTC's review and approval, that will be an additional condition to the previous aforementioned conditions.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it. And I'll fill with Cam. Good luck with that.
But it's all going to be fixed, see?
You guys got more than you didn't have, you know, so.
All right, next item for old business, preliminary plan, major subdivision, Worcester Road, R3217E, R2 Zone, Provincial Equity Development LLC.
Good night, thanks, guys.
Hello again. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Mr. Vice, Mr. Vice Chair? Mr. Acting Chair? There we go.
I'm sorry, I have a chair.
I'm actually, as an aside, I'm actually in your, your position, I'm vice chair of my hometown board, and my, yeah, the chair is going to be out for the next two months, so.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky me. Anyway, I'd like to address the comments from-
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, again, sorry about that.
You have to every time.
My bad, my bad. Mike Sudak from Attar Engineering, here on behalf of Providential Equity Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
If I may, I'd like to respond to the input from public comment first. Okay?
Please do.
And if I may pose a question to Mr. Cobb directly, the stream that you're talking about, is that the man-made swell right at the tree line? Okay, I'm going to address to you then, and we can, well, I guess we can't deliberate since the public hearing are closed, but anyway. So, yeah, I'm talking about the, the first comment from Mr. Cobb, talking about rerouting the stream or preserving the stream through our stormwater model, it's actually a deep, deep enough swell, the man-made swell, but it's a deep enough, deep enough swell that it's going to be hydraulically disconnected from how we're managing the stormwater from the proposed road. We're going to have a roadside swell that's elevated enough that even the bottom of that is going to have adequate cover over a culverted crossing that's effectively going to mirror the existing swell that you guys on the right side of the planning board bench saw out at the site walk. So that should be good, there should be no upstream effects from that. Next comment was regarding the preservation of the tree line, and to echo what Mr. Cobb said, at a minimum, the, the rear yard setback is going to be preserved for all of those lots, that's 25 feet in the R2 zone. So at the very least, that's what's going to be preserved along your, your property line there to the north. The next comment, you're absolutely right, there's going to be a home, either a road maintenance association, homeowners association, depending on how it wants to be set up to either incorporate the stormwater management elements or not, is going to be established for this development. And then the last item regarding the fence, it's something that I certainly can confer with my client on, you're right that that's not an insignificant distance, it's probably, yeah, between 400 and 500 feet, and while being respectful to the ailments that you listed for your wife, and also being respectful for the cost for that, is fencing going to adequately solve the issue? I guess it's just a question I'd ask for you, we can certainly deliberate, we're at preliminary plan, we're going to have a couple more, or we're going to have another whack at this for final, so we can get together and I'll, we'll see what we come up with, and that'll be presented for final, is how I'd like to handle it now. It's not something that's required for this type of development, it's certainly a, a fair consideration to have privacy, it is wide open out there now, so we can take a look at what's reasonable for providing that kind of privacy, and also just being realistic with the type of development and the size of the lots, and what type of privacy you can actually gain, be gained out there, because, yeah, all these houses are going to be two-story, can actually gain, be gained out there, because, yeah, all these houses are going to be two-story, including yours, which is wonderful, it's up on the hill, so we'll take a look at it, and that's what I promise to do for now.
One item for consideration, sir. Would you guys be amenable to, and maybe it solves both problems, and just throwing ideas out there, you know, you put up an eight-foot-tall fence, you've got two-story houses on either side, it really does not solve the visual issue for you. It is a barrier, and I certainly understand your concerns, would you be amenable to considering a visual buffer, some type of vegetation possibly, that would be on that side of the property, so it's not to affect Mr. Cobb's property? Just something to break it up visually for the people you're selling houses to and to him? Is that something in the realm of possibilities that you would consider?
It's in the realm of possibility, but I will say, if the intent is to completely solve the issue of privacy, then that's not going to do that. That'll provide some amount of sound dampening, it'll be a beautification of the space of the rear yard, but besides that, I mean, unless we're putting staggered rows of evergreens for 400 feet, and I am going to, I don't think I need to confer with my clients to say that that is a gigantic expense.
Okay.
So, we will look into the options, that's what I can promise for now, but your comment is noted.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, and thank you for the comment, sir. And the other...
Abutter that spoke, Pollack? Nice to meet you.
So, I can go into this with you, or it can just bleed, one can bleed into the other. Stormwater concern's completely legitimate, and if I'm, I couldn't quite see where you were pointing, ma'am.
Bottom, probably.
All the way down south, right? Okay, so...
It's too many.
Yep, got you here, thank you. So, the closest point of your property is, I'm going to say, over 1,500 feet from the closest point of where we're proposing to develop. Even so, the entire parcel is being analyzed with the stormwater permit that we have applied for with the state, and we are required to demonstrate that we have a peak runoff reduction or the flow of stormwater does not change in the developed condition relative to how it is right now, at the property line and at the downstream resources. And the downstream resources in this case are, there's a lot of culverted crossings of Worcester Road, it's probably four or five 30-inch pipes that all flow west, and it becomes the headwaters of Pine Hill Brook. So, that's the resource we analyzed, and we're demonstrating, we have a couple onsite BMPs I'm going to get into with these gentlemen, but we have demonstrated that we have a peak runoff production across all rain events, so you should have no adverse effect for your property. Thank you. That's all I have for abutter comments. I'd be happy to quickly go over the progress we've made since the last time we saw you gentlemen, and to catch up to speed, the two new members. So, really, at this point, it's just progress we've made with the state agencies. For those of you unfamiliar, we've received sign-off from the May Natural Areas Program and the Historic Preservation Commission. Both statements of no concern. We had two species hits from IF&amp;W, one for, I'm going to get this right, the spice bush swallow tail, which is a butterfly. We received a statement of no concern from Mr. Philip Demania, who's the species expert from IF&amp;W, so that's good. The other one is, as the alley pond, people are familiar, Mr. Derek York's habitat, actually, I guess three hits, habitat for both the black racer and the landings turtle. There's a couple hits in the area that the IF&amp;W, I guess, overall map pulled. Spoke with him in the middle of last week, he requested an updated species list of the forested wetlands near our development here. Our wetland scientist, Mike Cuomo, prepared that, sent it to him last Friday, and in addition, we went out and documented with dozens and dozens of photos those wetland complexes closest to our development, so all of that's been sent to them last Friday. I'm keeping on him, and that's, I hope to have his sign-off in hand for final. Besides that, for the DEP, the tier of stormwater permit we're in is the stormwater management law, because we're over an acre of impervious created. The notice and intent to file was posted, which is why Ms. Pollack is here tonight, and that was applied for and accepted, so we're into the statutory review period, which is 45 days. So, if I don't have that permit in hand for when I see you gentlemen for final, it will be forthcoming. And that's really all I have to update... Oh, no, I don't, Mr. Roy, you specifically. So, I think middle of June is last time I saw you, and the big talking point was lot six here, whether or not there, as it was previously designed, had a reasonable enough envelope for not only a building but onsite utilities. So, what we ended up doing was all of the roads on, or excuse me, all of the lots on that side of the road, so 2, 4, 6, 8, and 10, all got pushed to the left of the page as you're looking, so slightly west. Still don't need any waivers, we meet the minimum lot width requirement. So, 2 and 4 got slightly smaller, 6 got slightly smaller, 8 and 10 got slightly larger, but I believe how 6 is designed now is a much more agreeable envelope overall for both the building and the onsite utilities. So, that was my last comment.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah, good comment, I think it looks better overall, so... And with that, I will conclude my summary, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Any questions from the board? So, it's not a question, but it's a clarification.
Okay.
The black racer and the spice-tailed swallow butterfly and whatnot are definitely the right species, but it's not a landings turtle that's on your property, it is a spotted turtle.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
And Rick would know the difference.
I have never seen either, so thank you for clarifying.
Our onboard turtle expert is kind of nice.
Okay, are we looking for any motions on this this evening, or we're still waiting for final, correct?
We can approve our preliminary plan.
We can approve the preliminary?
I would make a motion that we approve the preliminary project as presented currently.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next item for old business is amendments to the land use ordinance, subdivision regulations, village overlay district design guidelines. I know previous discussion earlier this evening, I think, I know I have some strong feelings about it, I don't want to speak for the board, I would be amenable to us holding ourselves to tap, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I've got an exciting update. Y'all busy next Thursday, because we can throw it together for next Thursday, if you guys are amenable to that. I have sent, I had sent a, I was trying to get things organized so that we would all know before we left, for a joint meeting between planning board, select board, get everything ironed out for the, you good with that?
I'm on vacation, but I will teleconference in and make it happen.
You've got to find something high with a lot of signal.
I will make it happen, we have Wi-Fi at the cabin, so...
So, Noah, catch that on your way out, Noah.
What time on, what time on Thursday, ma'am?
You're welcome. I'm going to assume anytime after 6:00 PM when the town hall is closed, but I think...
You want to say 6:30 PM?
I think whatever works for everybody, you guys let me know, and we're going to make this, we're going to make it happen.
Can you send out an email reminder beforehand?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jerry, what are you trying to?
It's the 27th, right?
Yes.
Seven days from today.
Yes, it's the 27th.
Yes, today's the 20th, okay. I'm like, wait, what?
Always the time.
I am also on vacation, but I can maybe zoom in, I'm not positive. I'm going to be camping, so I don't know, I'll have signal.
Well, and anybody that, I would request any of you that have anything that are not necessarily going to be here to bring it yourselves, if you can email it to Terry and I, so we can have it and make sure that you guys' voices are heard, whether your Zoom is, because I know you, I don't know your vacation plans, but I know you're sketchy on yours as far as reception.
I'm sketchy.
As far as reception.
I will be there, I will be there. So, I would like to make a motion that we shelve that item until Thursday at 6:30 PM on the 27th, and we will make best effort with the select board to have a joint session and get a quality product put together in time for the vote, and I think that's reasonable, and it gives us all an opportunity to do a little homework. I would ask that before that meeting, the previous edits that we had recommended...
I'm going to look into that.
If we can review the video and make sure that all those edits are in, because they were not in this most recently, correct?
I will...
I'll talk to him to see if he can be at that meeting. This hasn't been my project so far, so I haven't had much to comment on.
It's a lot of moving parts.
And I'm like, if he can be there, I'll have him do that.
And I don't know if you remember, but we agreed not to discuss it too much, because Irish wasn't here, and you wanted her input.
I will be there.
Very little was discussed.
I will be there.
Lee J made just a couple of suggestions.
So, I will be there, I will get, Hannah will talk to Lee J, get whatever he's got, I will take whatever we get together, if you guys have any comments in advance that you know of, and I'm going to send everything out to you guys, even if it's just these two suggestions independently, you know, the lists from Pat and, thank you, guys. Even if it's just the list from Pat and the list from Jeremy, along with whatever we have for updates that were included, I'm going to send that to you guys individually, marked high priority. If you guys can make time to read that over the next week, would be great. Sound good?
That sounds great, thank you for making that happen. So, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and shelve that item until Thursday, the 27th, at 6:30 PM, for a joint session with the select board to iron out all those details and put forth a quality design guide standard to go before the voters at the next vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, Irish.
Don't thank me, I'm the one that created the train wreck to begin with.
All right, next item on the agenda, approval of findings of fact for Burwick Iron and Metal.
I do have all three of those to be, I actually have three, there's three there to be signed, I have them all three here, three findings of fact.
You have the originals for signature?
I do.
Okay, and they met all of the requirements we have? I think there was a certain issue at last...
I'll get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we will have the Blackmore Road storage project, and then the stormwater block road.
Okay. These were actually prepared for Mike's signature, does that, does that matter?
Shoot, oh, it's his name on there?
Yep, I'm Mike Garu certified, and I know he was involved in this one and with all the conditions, I just don't want to commit an administrative...
Does it, all three copies have his name on them?
Probably, because I wrote them for him.
It sure does, but I will tell you what, if you can, I am going out of town tomorrow, but if you need my, if Mike can sign them, great, if not, I can be here when you guys open to sign these before I get on the road, if that...
I would say, if you're here now approving them, you should sign them.
Even though it has his name on there?
We can alter, you can say, as amended, with my name to sign.
And I can sign them?
Yeah, or, and they can change it, and you can sign it tomorrow.
Okay.
So, worth for you.
You don't realize we're closed tomorrow, right?
Oh, you're closed.
I can come in in the morning, or I can stay and do it right after the meeting.
I'm trying to get on the road for nine. I got a six-hour drive.
It means he'll be here at noon.
We all know how vacations go.
Can I pen and ink it?
Can we, can you pen and ink it?
Is that...
Or do I need to retype it?
Can he cross off?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can go grab...
All of us on the record saying yes, so, if that's wrong.
I can go next door and get some white out, and then we can, whoever has the most...
No, 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 white out.
No.
So, I lined up Mike's name, and I added in front of Chair, Mike's Chair. Does that answer the mail for...
Yes.
There's one.
As long as it all says it's you, then we can go with that.
Would we need to get a revised copy of that?
Was it just your signature? It is.
I think these are good.
Yeah.
You sign it.
Yes, you can cross it out, we have a stalker who's giving a little procedural tips.
I give these back to you before I lose the shot. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, new business, sketch plan, Malloy Brook, major subdivision, School Street, Inherited Street, R 49, Lot 3, Atar Engineering.
And yes, you've got to give it again for the...
I was getting there.
Sorry.
Didn't even give me a chance this time. Hello again, Mike Sudak, Atar Engineering, here on behalf of SOW Solar Incorporated. Thank you for having me. So, let's see where to begin. So, this is our sketch plan review, which I can't remember how the town of Burwick handles that, if it's non-binding, or if you gentlemen actually vote on it, but either way, a brief overview for you, again, specifically for the two gentlemen on the left. This is 67 acres, also in the R2 zone. What you'll see across the center of the page there is, this was a separate portion of this parcel was approved in, I believe, the spring of last year for a large solar farm, but you'll see in the back there, kind of weaving between the wetlands, is the 10-acre occupied area for that. Just wanted to show you the overall parcel before I can switch to what we're proposing here up front. So, what we're proposing is a seven-lot residential subdivision, single-family dwellings, all frontage lots. This is a dual frontage parcel between School Street Route 9 down bottom and Heritage Drive here climbing up on the right. So, we're proposing conventional lots again, six of them fronting on Heritage Drive, and one of them fronting on School Street, just to the east of where that solar access road comes in. For those of you that were on the board at that time, we had originally endeavored a concept plan for this back the middle of last year that used that access drive, which is approved from the DOT as a 20-foot gravel drive, gated gravel drive. We sought to potentially improve that in the hopes of constructing a road from it, the DOT denied that. So, since then, we went back to the drawing board a little bit, this is what we've come up with for now. And yeah, besides that, pretty typical conventional subdivision, all lots will be onsite individual wells, onsite individual septic systems, wetland delineation, frontal pool study, high-intensity soil survey, all have carried forward from the last time this parcel was before you. And see what else I have here on my ledger. We are requesting, I don't know if it needs to be considered at this time, but we will be requesting one waiver, which is from your land use section 6.3, specifically table 6.3, which is your table of dimensional requirements for the R2 zone, specifically minimum lot width. So, we meet the frontage requirement of 150 feet for all these lots, but you can see here down bottom, lot 6 and 7 have a bump to them in the rear of each of those respective lots, one of them because of a, I believe, an old schoolhouse parcel that is kind of in the middle of the School Street frontage, and then lot in the rear of lot 7, just to accommodate the abutting solar road. So, we're requesting a waiver for both of those lots from 150 feet lot width to 140 feet, just couldn't quite get it otherwise. That's really it. Yeah, here for sketch review, be happy to take any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Which two lots were they?
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Yes, sir, I can see those.
Irish, was it, was it you that forwarded along the letter, or was it you that forwarded along the letter from the abutting area?
That link.
The abutter?
It's probably Derek.
You should have...
For Heritage Drive, for Mr. Komen's letter from his attorney?
Yes, you should have both of those.
I don't have it in the packet, it said it wouldn't be in the packet, it was emailed, I didn't see that.
There was a separate folder with those in it.
Yeah, I gave you the cover letters, and then I have the, let's see...
I know it got emailed out. I know it got emailed out. My, my only concern and the reason I bring it up, and I don't see it in front of me, but I did, it did get emailed, one of the abutters has a letter from his attorney specifically related to the stormwater management plan, and there's some very strong language in there with regard to the legality and our ability to vote on that. And so, moving forward, I think we're going to need to get input from the town attorney.
I'd be happy to speak to that briefly.
If you, if you're able to, yes, sir.
I did receive all the information from, from one of the abutters attorneys that you were referring to. And Irish, you're also welcome to jump in here and speak to this, but we, I've been familiar with this part, with this parcel before for the past two years, so I've been familiar with that potentially becoming an eventuality with this prospective development. And what accompanied or shortly followed this submission of this application to the town, we submitted to the town, to Irish, a pretty comprehensive list of correspondence that we'd had over the past couple of years between Allison Saroy, the regional manager from DEP, Phil Saucier, your town's attorney, and just correspondence between those two entities and my client's legal counsel. And with all of that combined, we believe that that has provided sufficient enough evidence to support our belief that we have RTI to make this proposed development happen. And what I was going to propose, you kind of led me there, was that moving forward, we'd be happy to have your legal counsel formalize that, so we can be allowed to proceed. But.
I think we'd be negligent in our duties as the board if we did not have the town attorney take a chomp on that letter. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I never played one on television, and I don't want to get dragged into the legal quagmire of making a bad legal decision for the town. So I think it's probably incumbent on the town attorney to make that call and not, not us.
Well, what we're doing, there's been obviously a lot of back and forth behind the scenes. So, we are looking into the legalities of it. First of all, trying, I'm trying to get somebody from the DEP to give me something in writing stating who can and cannot alter that stormwater permit, because ultimately that's what it's going to come down to. That has proven thus far to be about as easy as nailing jello to a tree, but I continue on. Hopefully I'll get something of clarity from them directly, because ultimately that's what it's going to boil down to. I do believe from everything else that I have found out, unless Hannah knows anything different, what it may come down to is us, I say us, you as a board, reviewing this, taking all input from abutters and, and public and myself, and then determining whether or not it would be able to be approved. And then if the board votes to approve it, or whether the board votes to approve it or deny it, either party can then enter into a civil lawsuit, which would then put the development on hold until the civil lawsuit is then resided.
Could we?
But we're going to try and prevent that out, we're trying to get it out front of it.
If it's in the realm of possibilities to take a reasonable persons approach, I would like us to do that. And can we ask the town attorney to view that document? Because when people get a letter from somebody's lawyer that says, you know, that the board should not vote on this because it's illegal.
Yeah, we're trying to get it in front of it.
I just want to make sure we're, we're within our powers and our realm of what's reasonable to, to move forward or to say no. And I just don't have enough information, and I don't think the board has.
Is that letter in the packet?
You should have, both letters are on the back of Malloy Brook.
And I'll say, while you're looking for it, I have been in contact with Phil Saucier. He was sent, all of the communication we've received from the lawyers, we have not received a formal comment back from him regarding the ones that were just sent, or just received the other day. So, we are working on that.
But that said, are they able to do whatever they need to?
Yes, the, the opinion we have from.
So we'll get something from the state that says you're going to say?
We're trying, she said they're, they're checking with Phil, Phil Saucier, our attorney. And I'm trying to still, quite frankly, regardless of whether or not we can get something from Phil, I'm still trying to get something from the DEP, because I feel like that's information that we need to know, where we've got these two parcels that are both kind of hinging on this DEP stormwater permit, and I think it needs to come from them. Our town attorney can certainly state whether or not you guys can vote on it, but ultimately, I think without, no disrespect intended to either party, I think I might stand a slight better chance of getting through to them, being a municipal employee, to get the DEP to put something in writing, which both parties will need if it comes down to court anyway. So, yeah, so we're already on top of getting Phil, Hannah's already getting Phil involved.
I just want to avoid putting anybody in the town in the legal crosshairs and costing us more legal money than we need.
I don't want to be involved either, so.
I think I just, I just go on record as saying, you know, I mean, I read this, just the last paragraph of this is legal opinion, and I think that, you know, from my, my experience as a developer, I think that he states the obvious, that only the DEP can amend the permit, so we're not voting on.
The question is who has the right to request an amendment from DEP? That's the question that's in play right now, Les, is whether Steve Clement, as the person who owns Heritage Estates, is the only person who has the right to, to request an amendment with DEP, or whether anybody who's going to be, who owns parcels adjacent can. Because DEP has been, I've seen written evidence from DEP involving this particular situation where they kind of have both, trended both ways. Well, nobody can, anybody can, nobody can, anybody can, they really need to, they need to settle on it.
Again, what does that have to do with the planning board? If that's a DEP issue and, you know, if they need to figure out how to amend that with the DEP?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with us. I'm not, I'm not going to vote on what the DEP has to do.
Well, that's why we're trying to get the, the answer from our town attorney of whether or not you guys can vote on it, which, you guys can vote on it. Phil is trying to get some guidance towards you as far as what the DEP requirements are. But ultimately, your job as a board is to review the, the projects before you, as they appear. You can ask those questions, you can ask for that documentation, you can condition the project on the ability, obviously, for the DEP permit to be amended, you do have the right to, to vote on it. We're trying to, I'm trying to nail down what, whether DEP is going to allow them to do that, so as to save the applicants' time.
I think a vote would be premature without anything from the DEP, that's, that's my first.
Well, there's no vote that would happen tonight anyway.
Okay.
Since this is just a sketch plan, the only thing that you would decide tonight, if you wanted to, would be scheduling a site walk. There is no approval or anything of a sketch plan in your ordinance.
What's, what's available for us to do a site walk?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Before, before you get into that, I'm sorry to disrupt you, Hannah.
Let's see, I got to find my notes.
Just, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear, I couldn't remember off the top of my head if Burwick was, was the town where you had to vote formally on sketch plans. So, this is just presenting a concept to you. Everything that's been discussed, while it may, in my opinion, be jumping, be jumping the shark, I understand that it's an eventuality that the town has to consider. Just a little bit of context as we move forward, just what we're talking about here, I know both the letters are rather long in length, I'd just like to summarize at least the information that's presented to me, and I promise I'll be quick. So, everything that is being considered here, or that's being contentious here, is regarding Heritage Drive. Heritage Estates is four phases, many, many units, that continues off the page to the north. There's a very large site location and development permit that was obtained from the DEP. My company actually worked on the final phase of that back in, boy, when I was in high school. But, it was granted back, I believe, in the early 2000s, I believe, '02, and then in 2007, the road, Heritage Drive, either in its entirety or all of, everything that was built, and the entire width of the right-of-way, including the stormwater management elements, was conveyed to the town. So it is, it is a town road, has been since 2007. That's been confirmed through the information that I sent to Irish, and we'd be happy to present to you either in its conglomerated summary, or in something that's more formalized as we've described here tonight. And the thing that I really wanted to bring up is Heritage Drive, all of the stormwater infrastructure that's in place out there right now, is completely hydraulically separate from this parcel. There's a berm, there's a roadside swale immediately off the edge of pavement in Heritage. We'll see it when we get to a site walk. For those of you that went to the last site walk, you probably would have seen it. There's, beyond the roadside swale, there's a berm that basically runs on our property line. So everything west of that, in our parcel, everything in our parcel drains through these two darker transparent hatches. There's two culvert crossings that leave the site, flowing underneath School Street south. Those are going to be our analysis points, we are not hydraulically connected to Heritage Drive at all, aside from any prospective driveway culverts that would have to come in from these frontage lots. So, the position that we've received from the state, because my client does not own land that's associated with, with the permit that the abutters attorney is representing, nor has he owned it at any point in time, all that we would need to proceed is a new application that is received at planning board approval with permission from the town, because the town is the holding entity for that right-of-way.
So there's no requirement for the new subdivision to do their own stormwater management permit?
There is, but it's completely independent. It's a new application, we would, we would file a new permit with the state, it would be reviewed on, on its own merits, and the position that we've received from state, from all the entities I summarized earlier, was that we do not have to request a transfer of that permit, we do not have to amend that permit, we don't have to be involved with that permit. That's the position that we've been presented. And again, we'll talk and the state and the town will come to a formal consensus on that, but just sharing my perspective on.
Okay. Why, why was this, why was this an issue then? Was this part of one parcel at that time?
Say again.
I said, was this part of one parcel at that time? So is this?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to project on, on what the issue of an abutting, part, abutting entity is, but from my perspective, the issue is that the lawyer and the abutter that presented that letter believes that they still have rights over Heritage Drive, specifically the stormwater management elements on our frontage, or abutting our frontage in Heritage Drive, and therefore they have the scrutiny to allow what happens on our frontage. That's my interpretation of it.
I think we're going to need a legal.
Yeah, yeah. That's beyond.
Yep, understand.
And we are working on a legal opinion on that. But at this point, you are safe to proceed, since there are not any formal votes of approval.
What's our earliest date for a site walk?
We have, we have three dates here, but we would, we're kind of hoping to withhold one, so the 10th or the 24th, because we, we have a special request for the 17th.
Pushing it to the 24th, does that create any undue hardship on, on you as an applicant? I know it's a little further out, but.
Would I be required to withhold a prospective, should everything we've described resolve itself to the point of us being confident presenting, preparing a preliminary application? Would a site walk be a barrier to me submitting that to the town?
Can he submit his prelim without the site walk being done first?
Yes. I would say, since the site walk would have already been scheduled, it just may not have happened.
Okay, yes.
Then no, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, let's schedule it for the 24th of August, want to say 4:30, 5 o'clock, what's?
You tell me, we'll be there.
Does five work for all you gentlemen? 5:00 PM on the 24th of August, site walk.
Is there anything you want them specifically to mark out?
Lead me to it.
If you can mark, mark out the outer demarcations of, of the subdivision and then the individual frontages for each lot.
Do you have any like front, front lock corners where we hit?
And you guys haven't done soil surveys or anything yet?
We have, yep. We have a full high intensity for the whole site.
And you'll, you'll just, you'll have the drawings for us, so we can see where all that's at?
Yes, sir.
So one, one concern I have, because I'm a nature guy, is the vernal pool. I see that it crosses lots one, two, and three, and has a no-cut, no disturbed buffer that will be feeded to those lots, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to make sure that gets done.
Yeah, so, just for reference for everyone else, that, the darkest hatch up there near, in, in the rear yard of lots one and two, very large, significant vernal pool. We went out, we submitted species lists to, to the state, quite a few egg masses in there. So, that's going to require a NERPA permit by rule for activities adjacent to a sensitive resource. And there'll be that, that heavy dash line that you see coming from it is a 250-foot critical terrestrial setback. So we're required to preserve 75% of the area contained within that perimeter. And to do so, we're going to have to indeed restrict the rear yard of lots one, two, and a portion of three. So, all of the, all of the building envelope and utilities for those three will be located up front, and we have test pits, as you can see, to, to support that happening, so.
Any further questions from the board? Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
All right, next item for new business, sketch plan, Norman Court, major subdivision, Old Pine Hill Road, R44, lot 20, Civil Consultants.
This is a conflict of interest for me, so I'm going to step away.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Neil Repose, I'm with Civil Consultants, here on behalf of Norman Court LLC. We have here for a sketch plan is a, it's a major site plan and conditional use, conditional use application for multi-family development on the existing Norman Court right-of-way. Not sure if all of you are familiar with it, this, this lot was part of a, part of a formerly proposed development. It was a large residential development that had a one road entering in off of Halflinger Lane and coming around through Norman Court. Since then, you know, the entities, you know, divided, and so the lots never, were never combined, and this, this is the result of a more condensed multi-family development that's going to keep itself all the way on the, on the roadside of Coffin Brook that runs through the property, and maintain a large open space, open space in the back to get the density, to get the, the 18 apartment units that are proposed for this development. This section up here was, this is actually a family lot split that was split out for future development, for a house for the family. That's not, it's not going to be involved in any of the additional subdivision, and it's going to stay in the family ownership, so that's all this portion here, there's literally nothing going on with this application. So, I flip this over and get a, show you the plan for where the development will be. So, the, the proposed development is going to rehab all of Norman Court up to this last lot that's currently served by it. So this is going to, to improve this to town standards right up, right up to this point here. We've done quite a bit of preliminary work on this to this point, even though this is just sketch. We've spoken with police, fire, main water, and also Underwood engineers for the, for the proposed sewer, because this will be going on municipal sewer and water. It's going to require a pump station to service these, these three buildings, to get this up to a, a structure, there'll be a gravity structure that will enter Norman Court and go to Old Pine Hill, and that's per the request of, of Jay Wheeler and Underwood, that's what they'd prefer to see, is only gravity lines entering the town system. So we've tried to take that into account as we, as we've gone through the preliminary and making sure everything would, everything would work through here. And also, there's a one single-family lot that's proposed to be, to be created here, and that's kind of due to the fact that it, we had, we had the room available, and there was, there was an opportunity to, to develop that and still maintain our, maintain our densities on this side, and accommodate this with, with our available parking and our, just the area we have between these, between these two wetlands and this, this existing house out here. We do propose this, that this, the whole development will be under the threshold for the stormwater permitting in DEP, so it's under an acre of new and developed, redeveloped impervious area. Despite that, we do, did want to incorporate some stormwater management, make sure that the receiving waters down below, coming through the cul-de-sac here at Halflinger, don't experience any increases. So we did do a full stormwater study and are going to implement some previous pavers at these parking areas up against the units, to provide treatment and quantity control And that's in a nutshell. Are there any questions?
How many units?
18.
18.
18, 18 individual units here, and then the single-family lot.
My only concern, I'll bring it up again, and it goes back to our staff work. I know in a previous meeting, we discussed, we're putting a lot on our infrastructure and our public utilities, and I know we had asked for written statements from both the water and the sewer department to quantify what is their current capacity? How is that capacity going to be affected with bringing the Edge online and all the apartments that are there? What is their future capacity, and what's the demand signal gonna be for them to request, whether it's public fund or whatever, for future expansion? And where this project is gonna be on public water and sewer? I think we would be remiss in our duties as a board if we continue to approve projects that require public utilities without that information. We're really putting the cart before the horse, and I know we asked for that 2 months ago, and we still have not received that as a board. We did receive an invitation to go visit the facilities, and I'm amenable to a facility visit, but I think we need the people who run those facilities, and that request probably has to come from the town manager to say, this is what our capacity is. And I think we would be remiss as a board if we did not have that information and were continuing to approve projects on public utilities.
Did you not see the email in regards to the water? The rest of the board may not have anyways, but from Daniel back on the 21st, that, this one to you, Phil?
Okay.
That they are working on finishing... Still gotta get your thigh balls getting better, but... So off the top of my head, I believe the existing filters are 300 gallons a minute. They don't run 24 hours a day because the filter backwash is, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, goes on to about 720,000 gallons per day max capacity, assuming they run 24 hours, although it runs a little less than that for backwash. Believes the current use daily is about 150,000 gallons per day with a peak of about 300,000 gallons a day. And they are going to be bumping up the pretreatment capacity up some to ensure they have plenty of room for future, and maybe even adding another filter many years from now when it comes needed. So they're not even anticipating a third filter until later on.
What I want to avoid, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, we just had serious water conditions with our public utilities last summer because we're in a drought condition. We're adding more and more infrastructure that requires a public utility, and...
But he gives other numbers here that says he believes the current daily use to be about 150,000 gallons per day with a peak of 300,000. And so, you know, a single-family, an entire single-family typically uses about 200 to 300 gallons per day. So literally...
So what is our current capacity, and what does that leave us for expansion?
So the daily, so the max capacity is around 700,000 gallons, and we're using about 150,000 a day with a peak of 300,000 gallons a day, so...
We're about halfway.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get similar figures from the sewer district as well?
I can get, see if I can get some figures from Jay. I can tell you that in my conversations with him and what he's got planned, we're using, I think he said around half or a little under half, because his, his... His, it's his baby. It's his area he deals with. But the sewer district was developed when prime tanning was still operating at max. Honestly, in my conversations with Jay, from what he told me is they're getting a second, they're... I don't know if any of you have had the pleasure of being down there and taking the tour, but basically, picture like 2 oversized swimming pools. He's got 1 processing right now, septicage. They're working on getting a second one up online. And the reality is, is right now, we would, we have the capacity to process more than what our permit allows us to do. So he has ample capacity. The bigger issue would be permitting, but I will certainly follow up with him on that.
I think that's just a valuable tool for us, because we'd be remiss in our duties if we keep approving projects and if we have another drought incident where we can't provide water to our townspeople, shame on us for not doing our homework and...
Well, I need to schedule something with main water. So Jay is the town sewer, and I can get Jay to put something in writing, I'm sure. Joe is the main water guy that I've got to meet with. Terry and I were planning on meeting with him anyways, because as you know, we're trying to get some information together to make a kind of comprehensive planning board packet, so I can certainly just get on that sooner rather than later, that meeting with him and ask him to bring that information.
I think what we're looking for is a firm commitment from them.
Yep. I'll ask him to bring that with him when we meet.
This is what we can do, and this is what, this is gonna be the time where we have to say, hey, we need some help, whether that's grant money or infrastructure. That's a very valuable tool for us, and we need it.
Do we know if we have any other secondary types of water flow underneath that we could tap into? Is that, I mean, we're depending on a river solely?
That information, I haven't dug that deep into our resources. It's been a chaotic 7, 8 months. I don't even know how long I've been here. But I can look into that, too. I know James and I did discuss that there was, there are, if I recall, the, and I know he's listening, so if I get this wrong, oh man, I'm in trouble. I believe there was studies done, and there is water in Berwick. I believe what the determination was made at that time was that the cost to basically get the water to where we need it to be was too high.
Because all the water's down where Paul and I live, not up here where everybody else lives.
It's actually, not actually an aquifer over there, believe it or not?
Yeah, there is.
It's not, not in that?
That natural. I can prove it.
You argue with them. I'm staying out of that one. I got my hands full, but I'll get main water, and I'll get the septic to the sewer district.
Do we have any further questions for this issue? Thank you for your time, sir.
Do you want to set a site walk for them?
We could do that.
Okay, so, like I said, we have 10, 17, and 24. You guys already scheduled the 24th. You guys have, I feel like we did this whole damn thing backwards for them, for JoJo. So you're gonna have to schedule on for JoJo's Cafe, which will be an easy, quick, easy 1, 2.
Can we do a 2fer on that? Can we do a 2fer?
Or we can do one on the 10th and one on the 17th.
This one shouldn't, really shouldn't take 2 logs. It's already on an existing road. We can stake out the building corners and the parking lot corners, and you basically see it from the road.
Do you want to do this on...
Let's do it August 10th.
Do this on August 10th? Okay.
5 p.m. work for everyone?
Yes.
That's for Norman Court?
Norman Court.
What about JoJo's?
We're gonna, we'll schedule that after she presents. They've had to sit through all of this.
Thank you for your time, sir.
All right, Neil. So you're gonna, anything in particular you want them to stake out?
Just the lots, and did you dig test pits?
There haven't been any test pits beyond the previous test pits that were done for the other development.
Those will be on the map from, I assume?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's it, just the lots on the frontage.
That's 5 o'clock as well?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next item for new business, conditional use, JoJo Cafe, 513 Portland Street, R72, Lot 5, RCI Zone. Thank you for your patience.
I didn't mean to make anybody feel bad.
Hey, guys. Aaron Barth, 513 Portland Street, also 311 Worth Street. First, I want to thank you guys for your volunteering, tremendous hard work here to try and improve the town. It's crazy, what, just seeing tonight, all of the new things that are coming on board. So, you know, with that being said, we see a tremendous advantage for us to open up a new cafe to offer to the town. So what it is, is gonna be a breakfast cafe, breakfast pizza cafe, serving cappuccinos, expressos, different cold foods, and individual breakfast pizzas. Very simple, small, elegant. It's probably the simplest thing tonight you'll face.
You have me at food.
We're talking coffee and food.
Maybe we save the rest for last.
It's a winner. No objections here. No, we're not open yet. I mean, we've been waiting for this moment. I'm sorry?
Where is 5?
513, the other landmark would be Trican.
Okay.
Okay.
I think this would be a good time to clarify that this will be edible food, but not edibles food.
Trican is on the corner of Old Route 4 and...
It's a great way to put it.
Correct.
So this is in that building, adjacent to that space, there will be complete.
The other half of that building?
Not the other half, actually.
Kind of the middle.
Trican got subdivided. The space, we divided the space in half because, look, the cannabis business has changed dramatically in this environment, in Berwick, talking about planning. You know, things definitely changed. And so we want to utilize the space as effectively as we can. So we took some unused space, and we want to turn it into something positive for the town at least, and not necessarily have that perception of it being a weed edible cafe.
What's brilliant is simplicity. You get them high, and then they come over and eat.
You caught, you caught me.
That's why I wanted to clarify. None, the food will be edible.
No, I mean, look, you know, we want to focus on sustainability and being able to offer stuff from local farmers, local produce. We want to keep it local. It's really important to us. And maybe introduce some different types of food.
What am I, your wife proposing for hours?
You know, I was sitting here thinking about that as well, because, you know, typically, we had proposed 7 to 7. However, look, we also know that a couple of places local to us open at 5 a.m. So we would want the ability, if we chose to open at 5, which I don't personally want to, but if it is an option to be able to open that space that early. We have a lot of early commuters going to the shipyard, and, you know, we have a lot of people who pass us at that time that would be looking for that type of stop. So I would say, and we don't know necessarily how things are gonna progress with this cafe. Initially, my wife and I were talking 7 to 2. It may transition into a late afternoon, you know, lunch. Who knows? So I want the ability, I want that flexibility from the town to be able to say, okay, you can be open from 5 to whatever, possibly 9. I wouldn't go later than 9. You know, looking at other restaurants in the area, Bubba's, and I don't know of any other places that were really matching. There really aren't that many places in Berwick.
I think we really could use some, you know, a nice cafe.
This is a sit-down. It's a counter, you know, order at the counter, sit down, relax. We're talking about 13 seats, 2 floor tops, or not, 2 4-seated tables, 2 tables, 4 per table, and then 5 or 6 bar stools. I wouldn't, I will probably apply for a liquor license, because it's something that, you know, look, who doesn't want a mimosa or a Bloody Mary in the morning on the weekend, possibly?
We've got a question. Since you know there's that little drive-through right next there, right?
I do.
Do you think that will...
Impact me? Look, I'll address that.
Never been there.
Because I have a cannabis shop as well, and we have 5 cannabis shops on our street. I think 1 other coffee shop is not gonna impact us. It's a completely different experience. It's more of a get out of your car, come in, order, sit down, open your laptop, enjoy a nice cappuccino or...
And I think that's the area that we want that type of traction. I mean, that section of Route 4 is, I think, right for that. You know, like you say, we have the Green Mile there already, so, you know, why not adding some more?
Yeah, and look, no joking aside, I do believe that it will assist with our other businesses as well. You know, there are, we need something different on that street. It's kind of absurd right now, so we want to see a little bit of a change.
You open tomorrow?
Let's get that stamped.
So we're looking to schedule a site walk.
So the reason I was hoping you would keep the 17th open is that is our next, we were hoping we'd be able to do, yeah, 17th. We're hoping that's the next meeting that we would have time to notice people prior to, and because this is a fairly simple, comparatively speaking...
So 5 p.m. does that work for everyone on the 17th?
We do currently operate our kitchens. I've already gotten approval from the state that we're able to cohabitate. We have 2 kitchens that we have, 1 downstairs for the dispensary, and then 1 upstairs. And that's the one that we'll be using for any type of baking or anything, but we also, right behind the counter, will have cooking and stuff like that. So we're already, we just have a couple of small details that we have to address, and simple.
Hannah, there's no state regulation or law that precludes a business from commingling a, this type of business with a marijuana business next door? Is there anything that would preclude us from being able to approve that?
Well, the fire chief and I have already walked through as like a courtesy.
The only thing that would preclude it would be a daycare.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, those type of establishments. Adult daycare, that's...
It's going to be completely separated, too, so.
I have, once I can get to it, the only question that I had was related to parking.
Yeah, so we have, I think we have 27 marked spots. In the entire, well, just on the top deck. We do have parking in the rear. We have an additional 8 spots in the rear that employees will be utilizing. We have some tenants that are gonna be moving out very soon, and so if we need that additional parking, we can pick that up. Look, like I said before, businesses decreased significantly with Trican, and we have that, what's nice is having those 2 entrances on the property. We don't have that 1 entrance, similar to Kind Farms, that really creates this bottleneck and dangerous aspect. However, we did have a death last year right there in front of our building, which was unfortunate. But it had nothing to do with our entrances, so.
I think the parking is, I mean, I'm very familiar with that building. I actually used to rent office space in there years ago. And I think there's, you know, for a cafe this size, there's plenty of parking. But, you know, we'll get into that with the...
One additional thing that I might request is approval possibly for outdoor seating. You know, on the backside of the upper front parking lot, I wouldn't mind cutting out some of the pavement and, you know, adding in some outdoor seating seasonally.
The backside of what?
You know, the front of the building, at the front of the building towards the back by the power... the back, by the power, power station.
You're on a corner lot, the front of the building being where I came in?
Yes, the entrance of the building. Yes.
Take a front. All right, thank you.
It's a side front.
Side front, okay.
So we do have a sidewalk scheduled for the 17th?
We'll do the 17th at 5:00 PM. That work for you guys, Aaron, Irina?
17.
Any further questions for the afternoon?
So if we want to, the board can find the application complete at this point. The only outstanding thing I had was the parking, which we just satisfied. Board can find the application complete and also schedule a public hearing for the 17th as well, if that's the planning board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Then yes.
I would make a motion that we find the application complete.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys. No, I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no, thank you for sitting through all the other issues.
And we truly believe this place will have a clear, different experience and perspective of the conference, because on your front...
Can you, can you talk into the microphone, ma'am? I'm sorry, because the, the people at home can't hear you.
Irina Bar. So I would like to bring to this small, little, unique town something special and different experience, and we will provide the best cappuccino in town. I guarantee. Yes, we promise.
Oh, it's refreshing.
I had a year of training, so...
It's refreshing to have this type of a business come before the board, because, you know, I...
I kind of get some...
How much marijuana and solar do we see, and now something different? So thank you for that, and it's, it's refreshing.
And clearly, there's a tremendous amount of infrastructure and developments and people that are going to be coming into town.
You mentioned possibly two different kinds of food. What kind of food were you...
Russian.
Russian?
No, it's not just Russian. It could be bakery as well, like croissants.
Yeah.
And salads, cold salads, yeah.
You had me at cappuccino, but Russian food's great, too.
Be careful, Les. He keeps promising that I will absolutely love the cappuccino, and yet I have yet to see one made over there.
It doesn't hurt any animals.
It doesn't hurt any...
They're all good.
Exactly. Are there any turtles?
Turtle soup. We actually, we actually considered the straws for the turtles. There you go.
Did you just ask him if they were having turtle soup?
Turtle soup.
Oh, you have good luck with Karen tonight. You have good luck.
She's on an airplane.
She's on a plane.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. So we'll see you later.
Second public comment. I see no one here for public comment? Thank you.
Yeah, you cut it close, guys.
Any informational items? Hannah? Irish?
I got two brain cells tonight. I don't think I...
You've already used both of them, so...
I have to shake my head until they bash off each other and make a...
We blew through our mandatory 8:30 close.
It was 8:30?
It's 9:00.
I thought it was 9:00.
It is 9:00. But 8:30. But listen, you guys, like...
We had one that went almost 11:00 one night. We said, we're going to put a limit of 8:30 on some...
You cut it close.
Because 9:00 is not a good time.
That's closest you guys have gotten.
All right, do we want to adjourn?
If there are no further items for consideration from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Burwick Town Hall, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That better be unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your excellent support and patience and volunteer...
Just for the record, I did call...